Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for joining our meeting. Today is February 28th, the last day of February. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indecisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams, so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. Next, we'll move into any announcements by the board. And just very briefly, I had the opportunity to attend the PTA council meeting. As usual, it's just a very robust meeting consisting of people that really care, our leaders in the PTA that really care about our schools and how we meet the needs of our children. I want to acknowledge the work, the effort, the caring, and just say thank you, Jessica, on behalf of the board, for all you continue to do. It is an honor to be at your meetings and hear the discussions that really get to the heart of what's best for our kids. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate it.
We appreciate you all. Any other announcements?
I'll just mention, Rosemarie, as you said, you had been to an advocacy meeting with Andrea Stewart Cousins, Senator's cousins, and I also attended an advocacy meeting with Senator Shelley Mayer, and Dr. Rika was there as well. And there were a number of superintendents and board members who attended these meetings. You mentioned, Rosemarie, that you advocated, you know, having to do with remote access to school board meetings. I talked about funding for pre-kindergarten. There was talk about money for social emotional learning and mental health of our students, transportation and electric buses, addressing teacher shortages. So lots of good advocacy work being done, and we have a lot of support from our legislators. So we're very grateful for the work that they've been doing.
Yeah, thank you for that, Cheryl. And let me acknowledge, yes, I did, I was able to be in the group with Andrea Stewart cousins, and so Dr. Rika was also in attendance in that group. And I do appreciate our legislators for hearing about our real problems and even going to making our meetings accessible without worrying about open meeting laws. We believe it's an issue, not an issue, but it's an equity thing. We want to make sure that we are able to have every guardian and every parent that wishes to attend our meeting have the opportunity to do so. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Are there any more comments from board members? Thank you, thank you, everyone. Next, I'll go to you, Dr. Rika.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everybody. And to the point of the trustees, this evening's meeting is being held via Zoom, not because of COVID-19, but because we want to try to make sure that we're as accessible to folks as possible. One of the things that we keep hearing from people is that a mix of in-person and virtual meetings is helpful with schedules and the like. So thanks to the trustees for allowing us to continue to explore these types of opportunities. We don't have a moment of silence on tonight's agenda, but without a doubt, we're all silently thinking about the children and the adults in Ukraine and in Russia right now. You know, we all, every day, have challenges that we go through, but it's not lost on any of us here that there are millions of little children waking up in a war-torn country today. And of course, not the only one in the world. But, you know, as educators and as parents and as community members, we can't help but think about those kids and hope certainly that things are quickly brought to peace so that they can get back to their lives of being children. You know, and it segues into the types of challenges that we experience here, right, in our own community and in our own school district. And it does bring perspective, at least it brings perspective to me, certainly with the challenges that we face on a daily basis, while they're large. But certainly, you know, there are many, many challenges out there in the world that little kids are put up against every day. So, you know, of course, our thoughts and our prayers and best positive wishes are going to those kids. We're also talking about, obviously, the war, the invasion, you know, the subsequent challenges associated with all those things in our own schools and answering questions of our own children. Many of our community members have relatives that are impacted either in Ukraine or neighboring countries, Russia. You know, these are situations in a global society where no matter where you live, folks have ties and connections, very deep ties and connections. So we're handling that, of course, at the school level as well. And I want to thank the trustees, that many of them reached out and said, hey, you know, we're making sure that our kids who may have a connection are being looked after, right? And the answer, of course, is yes. So thanks for that. We also have an update for our community that, of course, yesterday, Sunday, 2 o'clock, Governor Polk notified the state that masking in schools and on school transportation will become optional on Wednesday of this week. We shared that information with our school community. There is supposedly, not supposedly, there is additional guidance that's forthcoming. We've not received that guidance yet. If I've not gotten an update from the Department of Health tomorrow, by tomorrow afternoon, we'll let the community know that fact, just so that everybody is on the same page, everyone understands what we know and what we don't know. A lot of lingering questions related to other health safety mitigation strategies. Do they continue on, or are they modified and/or reduced come Wednesday, when masking becomes optional in schools? We had our county meeting this morning with all the members of county, including the Health Department, as well as the superintendents in the region. And the numbers in our county are good, you know, and this is something that we all know, but they continue to trend in a downward trajectory, which is good news. That being said, there are still many members in all of our communities who are anxious about a transition to a mask optional environment. We are very sensitive to that, as we have been very sensitive to folks who wanted masking to become optional sooner. Our job is to try and thread the needle and be supportive to everybody. What we have been really clear about is that anybody within our school community who wishes to continue to wear masks will certainly be supported doing so. And we are also willing to support folks as best as we can as we transition into this new phase of the pandemic. I know that our colleagues in the classroom are working really hard to be supportive of our kids, and of course, our colleagues, because everybody comes to this from a different place. And, you know, this is not new for us. Throughout the entire pandemic, everybody has been coming to it in a unique situation based upon what their lived experiences. So we're continuing on in that fashion, that supportive fashion, and of course, you know, communicating everything that we have, all the information that we have, as soon as possible. So we'll keep everyone apprised as to what updates come, share them out as quickly as possible. Our reopening committee meeting is scheduled and was scheduled for Wednesday this week. So we will, of course, review any additional information that we have at that time as well. But I do want to thank everyone who's taken the time to reach out, to share their perspectives, to give their feedback, their opinions, you know, sharing all kinds of information. And of course, we're grateful for that, and I think that's been a strong point in our community throughout the pandemic. So thanks, thank you to everyone. We are continuing, and Rosemarie and Cheryl mentioned advocacy, we are also continuing our advocacy efforts. I'm scheduled to be with Assemblywoman Paulin next Tuesday in Albany as we advocate for additional funding for pre-K, not just in White Plains, but all throughout the state of New York, yet making sure that school districts have the funds needed to be able to, if not, if they don't have the space or the capacity to run pre-K themselves, that the opportunity makes sense for pre-K providers to be able to serve the children in the community. Many school districts, you know, try as hard as they might to partner with community providers, are unable to do so because the funds associated with the children are not at the market value, if you will, for what a pre-K education costs. So we're going to keep advocating there. That's next Tuesday, and I'll be happy to give an update to the Board of Education, the community, at our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, which will be on March 7th, and that will be when we share the proposed budget. Tonight, sorry, March 14th. Tonight, we are going to be looking at the non-instructional budget presentation, and I'm going to share my screen. Well, you know what, let me do this, Rosemarie, if it's okay. Does anybody have any questions about any of the non-budget related items that we just talked about? Okay, great. So again, before I get started, I have to, I always do this, but it's important. I have to thank everybody for all of their hard work and diligence in coming together and bringing together this next portion, the non-instructional portion of our operational budget. Many, many hours, you know, obviously, planning, envisioning, and putting this together. I want to thank the finance and audit committee for, again, participating in the construction and the review. And this evening, we're really very proud to share with you the second portion of our proposed budget. And we hope that you're excited and proud as well, come the conclusion. So I'm going to move us right through here. Of course, the budget, the presentation is going to be available for everybody to be able to review at their leisure. This meeting is being recorded, will be up and available for folks to go through and to see the presentation very easily as well. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Rosemarie.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. But I just also, when we mentioned our finance committee, you know, Tim Donahoe and Craig Mundelshine have just been awesome on our committee. When I think of communities, one of the reasons why I think that we are the absolute best in terms of community support, it is because of people like Tim Donahoe and Craig Mundelshine that come, they show up, they offer their expertise and guidance, and I just wanted to acknowledge them. I see that Craig is on with us now. I didn't see Tim. But I just want to acknowledge their time, their effort, their expertise, and just say thank you for everything they do and continue to do for us.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Rosemarie, and thank you, Craig, and thanks for being here with us this evening as well. So this evening, we're going to take a look at, as I mentioned, the non-instructional budget, just to give you a quick rundown of the presentation itself. And of course, my mask is sticking just a little bit. We're going to start off with revenues. We'll take a look at demographic data and staffing. We'll touch on employee benefits, tax certs, debt service, operations, master plan, which is also on the agenda this evening. More to come on that. And then next steps in the budget presentation process. So starting off with revenues, I'm going to tag team back and forth with Dr. Vicaro Teich here and kind of move us right through. So when we think about the budget, obviously, we break it out, and the vast majority of the budgetary support comes from our community, as you well know. One of the things that we have been very keen on is advocating, and this board has been tremendous in advocating for White Plains' full share of foundation aid. And we're really excited that this investment has come through. One of the guiding principles that you're going to see throughout this budget presentation is that we are continuing to build on and capitalize on our long-range plan, as well as our strategic plan. And at the same time, coming in, while we do have an allowable, I believe it's a 3-point, and again, I'm saying I believe because my mask is sticking, right, 3.24% allowable tax levy, we are proposing to come in at zero this year. Now, this is not something, of course, that we take lightly, and this board has been tremendous, and it's fiduciary responsibility to ensure the sustainability of our financial structure in the district. But as we have had this infusion of full state support, we believe that it is time, we know that this is the time that we can do it, and we have spoken for years about being able to continue to support our property taxpayers. So all of these great things that we're talking about in this proposed budget come at a 0% tax increase for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. So again, thanks to the Board of Education, thanks to the Finance Committee for getting us to this place, and of course, Dr. Vicaro Teich and her team, where we're able to present a budget that does have a zero tax impact.
Joe, I'm sorry, if I can just try, ask a clarifying question. A 0% increase in the tax levy does not necessarily mean that each homeowner will see no change in their taxes. Is that correct? It depends on, you know, the tax base and a number of factors, what each individual homeowner would see.
That's true. It does have an impact on each particular homeowner. However, with this particular budget plan, there should be, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, there should be no increase based on this particular budget.
Dr. Rika, for the tax levy, we're waiting...
On the levy side, yeah.
For the levy side. For the tax rate side, you know, we're waiting for tomorrow's March 1st. We should get the tax rolls from the city of White Plains, and then we will be able to estimate what we think our tax rate might be, if any. You know, hopefully, the tax rolls are flat with the prior year or a little increase, and that certainly will be to the benefit of the taxpayers.
Yeah, but it's a great question, Cheryl, and it's important to make that distinction between the levy and the rate, right? The tax rate and the tax levy. The tax levy in this proposed budget is zero.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. Anne, you want to just hit us on the highlights here?
Sure. So this is the formula for our tax levy limit. It's complicated, you know, formula that the state has, and we know it's not a 2% levy. Actually, the only thing that's 2% is on the allowable growth factor, which is the lesser of CPI or 2%. And this year, Consumer Price Index for the year changed for December was actually 4.7%. So we were limited to that 2%. And as Dr. Rika went through, you know, our maximum allowable tax levy calculates out to 3.24% increase in the levy, or $6.4 million. And then, you know, we've decreased that each year, partially for $2.1 million through using our debt service reserve fund to offset principal and interest payments on our bonds and our, you know, our principal and interest on our bonds. But now, further, we're recommending, because of the increase in the state aid, to bring it down to 0%, which is another $4.3 million.
Thanks, Anne. So, yep, that is the good news. The state is investing in education. And really, I mean, the state always invests in education. We always invest in our children. But really, fully funding the foundation aid piece was the big, of course, you know, proposition that made all the difference for us. So foundation aid is, again, maintaining that full phase in over the three years. We'll be fully funded by 2023-2024, and you can see how that breaks out. The 20% state aid adjustment, which we had talked about, remember, when the pandemic had first hit, is that $5 million restoration. And the expense-driven aids is a little bit different. Well, I'm hopeful that, you know, they're all fully funded. But I think we still need to see where things... It's important to remember, like, the full budget, the full state budget, is still forthcoming. So we'll see how that shakes out over the course of the next four weeks or so.
But the good news about that is that they didn't tinker this year with the formulas. So that's the positive.
That's right. Each year, we take a look at our demographics, and it's been what we've seen all throughout the state. We have seen a reduction or a decline in live births. We've seen losses, statewide losses, for folks who have left the state for one reason or another. Many indications point toward the pandemic. You know, whether or not those folks move back to New York, the governor was just talking about that this afternoon, remains to be seen. Certainly, there needs to be, you know, an attractive reason, other than all of the attractive reasons that exist, for folks to move back in. And we're just unsure as to whether or not we'll see an uptick in births over the course of the next year. But we've seen these decreases that are projected. And really, you know, over time, looking really 10 years out, we could be at around 6,000 students, which is over 10%, you know, a decrease in student enrollment. Now, that lot can happen in 10 years, you know. So these are projections, but at the same time, we do this every year. It's important for folks to recognize and understand, you know, what we're looking at. You'll remember, just a couple of years ago, we were talking about concerns in enrollment in terms of, you know, having too many students and not enough space. So these things change from year to year. We'll continue to keep a close eye and report out what we're seeing. And again, this is an annual endeavor for us each year. So this, again, these charts sort of give you a sense of where we could potentially be. In terms of staffing, again, looking at our preliminary budget, modified budget, and then adopted budget, you can see where we ended up. And it is important to note, and you'll see that asterisk there, the district held the additional approved positions. As you remember, in 2021, they weren't included in the 21-22 original budget. When the final state budget came in, we were able to reinstate those positions. Employee benefits. Anne, you want to talk a little bit about the benefit projections?
For sure. Teachers' retirement system for certificated employees. That contribution rate by the district is anticipated to increase to 10 to 10.5. I think it's really going to come in around 10.29, from 9.8% to 7% increase. And that increase really is really related to the TRS Board making a change in their rate of return assumption. For the employees' retirement system, for our civil service employees, that contribution rate is actually going down from 16.2 to 11.6, a 28% decrease. And then our health insurance, and kudos to the Swiss ship board, is going to have a premium rate increase of 1.5%, which is substantially below market trends. So that is a huge impact in savings to districts who are part of the Southern Westchester Consortium for Health Insurance. And then we estimate our other benefits to increase anywhere from 3% to 5%.
And Anne, I'm just going to have you talk a little bit about tax certs as well.
Sure. So the district, you know, gets claims to refund commercial property owners who challenge their property assessment. The district is self-funded for this. We do not raise taxes to pay these refunds. You know, on average, for the last 10 years, our claims each, you know, average about $3.5 million. Legal counsel believed this year we would have $5 million in refunds, partially due to the fact that last year it was such a low, it was very slow moving through the courts. So they feel that there would be a pickup this year, although I'm not sure it'll come in that high. They also estimate that we should adjust our tax search for our reserve to $60 million by the end of June.
Doing a lot of talking about debt service, particularly as we were talking about master planning. Right now, we have two serial bonds and the energy performance lease. And it lays out here what our annual principal and interest payments are. We constantly look to be able to offset where we can in terms of transferring one-time-only savings. And this is, again, what we're planning to do this year. It's part of our master planning funding strategy, which we'll talk about in a few slides down the road. But the idea here is to be able to implement the master plan, capital plan, projects, while not having an increase by utilizing that debt that's falling off and not increasing, again, the taxpayer portion of what they'd be paying toward that new project. Anne, am I capturing everything there?
Yeah, yeah. And again, you know, the main thing for this coming 22-23 budget year is the fact that that $2.1 million coming in from debt service reserve, you know, you can see, actually reduces the principal and interest that we have to raise as part of our budget. So a return to the taxpayers.
Thanks, Anne. Moving into our operational departments, first, of course, we have athletics, and Mr. Cameron is extraordinarily fond of the huge tiger, so you're going to get to see him a few times. We are so proud of our student athletes. We just had a couple of heartbreakers. We had a heartbreaker on Saturday for our girls varsity. They played a tremendous game. But unfortunately, we fell a little bit short, tiny bit short, but they did a great job. And we had a heartbreaker, too, in overtime of the hockey last week. And again, kudos to everyone who did a tremendous job, coaches, parents, and of course, our student athletes. And that's something that we've come to expect of our student athletes in terms of not only their outstanding performance in their sport, but also their outstanding performance in the classroom. And we see that and we celebrate that several times a year annually. We have a lot of athletic opportunities for our children. You know, we lay it out here, 1,000-plus athletic contests annually. When you think about traveling, you know, 500 bus trips just in athletic competitions alone. 68 teams, 96 coaches, a lot of support and a lot of opportunity for our kids. And that's something we're really proud of. So you look at the fall sports numbers, you have total number of 27 teams. And the board has been increasing teams, particularly at the modified level, where interest shows. And you'll see that in a couple of slides down the road. We're going to be making that recommendation again. Winter sports, 19 total teams. Spring sports, 20. And some highlights are for new, rather, for 2022-2023, athletic trainer. And then here, again, boys' modified basketball coach, which would be a new team for students. We got a lot of boys who wanted to come out and play. We want to include as many student athletes as we possibly can. We do not like having to turn students away when they want to participate. Girls' modified basketball coach, again, new team. Assistant volleyball coach first with a stipend there. The summer sports academy, we're very excited about this. Again, open to all students, not just student athletes, but SAT and ACT test prep, working on study skills, while also working on speed and strength training. And again, every student is welcome to participate in this program over the summer if it interests them. Estimated budget is $50,000. I already spoke about those two new teams. The estimated budget, including coach stipends, is about $28,000. And then we move right into technology. And we've been, you know, really thrilled with the access and opportunity that our students have had. We've seen our IT department and our technological infrastructure really up close and personal over the last two years. And we're continuing to make sure that we're putting the appropriate resources into our technology so that we stay strong and we can, you know, whatever comes at us, we have the ability to move through it. But at the same time, exposing our children to technology in appropriate ways within their regular academic day. So again, one-to-one iPads for all of our kids, increasing access in terms of Wi-Fi. If you don't have that at home, we can help, and we have, again, another point of pride here in White Plains, all of our 100% connectivity. That's a big deal. You know, sometimes we just say things, and we flow to the next challenge or next issue. But just, I want to just sit on that for a minute. 100% connectivity and 100% access, that's a big deal for our kids. You have four children in your household, that means you have four iPads. You don't get one iPad, you have to share it with four children. You know, and that, again, tip of the hat, kudos to our IT department and all of our team members there, but mostly, of course, the board, for having the foresight to get us in this groove that we were able to then capitalize over the last two and a half or so years. We're also in the process of building from the ground up a new district website. The focus will be on user accessibility and ease of use. You know, we're looking at one to two clicks for moms and dads and students to get to where they want to be on our district website. And making sure that it is a best-in-class, if you will, experience for our school community. We're increasing all of our analytic opportunities and capacity in terms of being able to identify student progress indicators and then intervene quickly based upon those data sets. We are increasing our voiceover IP access at MAS. We just, we installed, moving in terms of regulation and compliance. Cybersecurity is so important, as you know, making sure that our school district and all of our student records are secure. And we've been working really hard with the Lyric... And we've been working really hard with the Lyric on that. Our three-year technology plan has been, I'm sorry, will be submitted in April as, as required. And just a couple of miscellaneous things. Again, we're continuing to utilize the installment purchase group, the IPA, if you will, so that we can continue to purchase and pay for technology in, in a fashion that sets us up for the, the fiscal advantage and not having to worry about that year over year over year. So hi, again, I just, I just mentioned the, the IPA, which again, really, really important. We, we, what was that, Anne? Was that about three or four, it's hard with COVID. Three or four years ago, we started the IPA, maybe three?
No, it's, it's, we're IPA six. I think I did that. We started that in year two, maybe seventeen, eighteen. You know, the install, I mean, it's a great thing that BOSI's offers us the installment purchase option and being able to, you know, maximize our purchasing power in one year and pay for it over three years. And the goal is to increase that, given all the new technology in the district. And we'll be using one-time-only money in twenty-one, twenty-two to pay off IPA number three and four so that there is a cost-neutral impact to that increase in that new IPA.
Thank you. Nice picture here. I think this, I really think this is a picture of Mrs. Lyons's class when they, they gave me a shout one day, which was really cool. We are upgrading to the BenQ interactive TVs in, in all of our classrooms at Highlands and Eastu. It's adaptable, which is great. And these, these interactive TVs are far, far more economical in terms of their, their, their capital outlay costs. And, and really, what we've been hearing from our colleagues is that they're, they're easy to use. And they've been doing a, a great job in, in the classroom. So we're excited about that. Upgrading the digital art labs at high school and Highlands, new Mac computers. Again, voiceover IP phone hardware going in, which again, brings us those additional safety and security features. And we, we all know they work. Folks are able to call lockdowns from their classrooms. And then, of course, you know, that could be for any scenario, not just, you know, the, the most emergent scenario. But, but any type of an emergency, we have the opportunity and the ability to make calls from our rooms. We're also looking at uni- universal student ID cards, which will be used everywhere from the cafeteria to the, the getting into our schools in terms of swiping in food services. Will help with attendance and, and our instructional system. So again, moving toward an automated or more automated accessibility point for our kids as well. Talking a little bit more about that cybersecurity testing and making sure that, that our security is, is where it should be and keeping us protected. We've used the, the K-12 system for forms and submissions, as you've known throughout the pandemic. Even building some of those forms, you know, from the ground up for, for many of the things that we've been doing on a daily basis. And as, as you probably have heard, we are moving away from the daily screener that folks have been doing for the last two years, come, come March seventh. But we do have the capability to reinstate it if we need to and for, for any other various types of, of reasons in a similar vein. In vision, we're, we're got the, our, our hosting upgrade at BOSI's and we're hiring, are recommending the hire of an additional BOSI's technician, which again, is, is adaptable as well. Food and nutrition, I, I really, we, we talked about food services last couple of weeks, several opportunities. I can't say enough about how excited we are seeing great strides and, and thank you to all of the team members in food services. And of course, Dawn McGinn, we, we've got a lot happening there. And she really broke it out nicely, I thought. And Anne, I'm gonna ask you to, to kind of just walk us through this slide.
Sure. So last summer, this past summer twenty-one, we certainly saw an increase. And the goal is to continue to, you know, partner with our community-based organizations and really to provide more sites and ability to get more food distribution out to the whole city. And just expand the summer meals to all school-based programs. So that's what we're gonna focus on for summer of twenty-two. And then, you know, we had a a food service nutrition program assessment back in October of twenty twenty. And, you know, that program evaluation, you know, really showed us that, you know, our goals are really have to be focused on increasing that meal participation, decreasing our expenses while aligning our staffing. So we want to definitely increase opportunities for kids to get their meals. So increase, you know, the breakfast grab-and-go program, you know, putting more kiosses at both the middle school and the high school. Look to, and on the next slide, you'll see this, look to have culinary and dietary assessments done. You can go back, yeah. And really look at having menu evaluation and see how we can make those improvements. And, and looking towards farm-to-school programs, which is really very exciting. And then aligning our staffing to that. And on, on the next slide, it really just kind of talks about that, you know, more about the fact that we really want to hire a consultant to do a culinary assessment and a chef to really look at satisfaction, our menus, participation. And then a dietitian to really kind of look at, you know, you know, are our menus appropriate for the age of the student and whatever special diets they may have. So doing a culinary recipe review, looking at our staffing, making sure that that's appropriate. Again, always looking at procurement and our farm-to-school program implementation. And then always evaluating equipment. So Dawn has her work cut out for her.
I, I, I will say, you know, like everything else, we, we work to do in the district, providing our children with choice is, is important to us in, on all aspects. And, and food services is no different. And the fact that children have multiple choices every day for breakfast and lunch is, is really a point of pride for us. And, you know, looking at the types of food and really asking the kids which types of food they, they prefer as well, has been a hallmark of what Ms. McGinn's been working on with the team since she arrived. And, and we have some really exciting things coming down the road. And I, I'm really proud that we're working so hard to provide students who may have specialized dietary needs or dietary restrictions with those opportunities in, in the cafeterias in our buildings. I think that's important. We're also continuing to advocate for funding for, for all of our children to eat every day. We, we think that all throughout the United States of America, every, every school-aged child who comes to school should be able to access breakfast and lunch regardless of, of their, their home situation, socioeconomic status or whatever. I will tell you, and we all know this, that having to fill out the form for free and reduced lunch is a major barrier to students getting food. There's a lot that goes into, while it seems like for some of us, we might think, well, you just fill out the form. And if you qualify, you, you know, your child gets the food. Filling out the form in and of itself is, is, is a very difficult thing for a parent or guardian to do. And while that form is, you know, that application process exists, it remains a barrier to children getting food. So we're gonna continue those advocacy efforts as well. Health services.
Joe, good question about the food. So we were, the federal government gave us money to pay for breakfast and lunch this year. That was an extension for, of COVID, right? You know, you're advocating, but where are we now with next year? Have they even discussed that since we're four months left in this year?
Yeah, my, my, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
I, I was just saying, my understanding is that this is, continues to be a, a conversation at the federal level. I don't know, you know, where it sits in the hopper or what omnibus bill it could potentially, you know, be, be put into. But I do know that this is something that, that there's been a lot of conversation around.
And Anne, that extension was late last year, right?
It was, it was. So, you know, we're hoping we'll hear soon because, you know, we're kind of at a stalemate. We're trying to plan next year's budget to understand, you know, you know, what we're exactly looking at. So we're anxious. We're hoping somehow they tweak, you know, there's different ways to tweak it, whether to lower the requirement for, I'm forgetting the name of it, but it's where it's CEP, I believe, where, you know, all, all children throughout the district would qualify and lower that calculation. Or it could just be flat out where they're gonna offer it free to all children. So we're all lobbying for that.
Thank you.
Excuse me, before we go to the next section, can I just take you back a minute to technology? I wanted to ask about the BOSI's technician and what, what that would serve. What the function would be of that new position?
Similar to the tech positions that we have now, we have so much more equipment with the pandemic. So they just need more hands on task. I'm not quite sure how many we have currently. I wanna, I wanna say three. But it's to provide that, that greater support.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thanks, Anne. Thank you, Charlie. We, we sped up that timeline of one-to-one, obviously, one-to-one rollout. And this is helping us to sort of keep pace with that. Health services, you know, an enormous, an enormous, an enormous integral office and department in our school district, obviously, worked extremely well within our community to support everyone during, obviously during the pandemic. But you know what? Every day. Yeah. And, and, you know, it could be, it could be an upset tummy, it could be a scraped knee. Maybe it's just a, one of our kiddos who needs a hug. The nurses are there every day. And, and the, the vision for next year is continue to support that office. We want district-wide training for CPR and AED use. Increased medical supplies, again, of course, is all part of the budget. And, and as necessary, continuing to manage the, the pandemic or the transition out of the pandemic is, is the hope. Health aides, substitutes, you know, PPE, all, all of those, all, all of those processes that have been in place now for the last two years. As I mentioned, we're unsure what Wednesday means, right? So we know, the governor said masks are optional in the state of New York come Wednesday. But there was no additional detail as of yet related to test-to-stay programs or testing requirements or quarantine isolation requirements, all the like. So we need to be prepared for, for anything. And we are in, in this plan. Transportation, just again, huge thanks to, to everyone working in the transportation department, certainly Serge and, and the team. Anne, you want to talk us through transportation just a little bit?
Sure, sure. So currently, we're operating seventy buses, thirty-eight van routes. And we have twenty-three routes with monitors. We transport over six thousand students to our public schools, as well as private schools within the city and other locations where students might be placed. Our current contractor agreement is expiring this June. And we are in conversation with the contractor about the recommendation of a, a new three-year agreement. And so we're working on that. And we've been in discussions with the finance committee about that. We are looking towards using some one-time-only funds for twenty-one, twenty-two to upgrade our software, TransFinder, that hadn't been upgraded since I think it was originally put into service. And part-time support, which will assist, you know, the office between customer service and reduce those temporary peak times when we need to use temporary staff. And then we're looking towards being able to provide additional busing for those programs that hadn't had it. You know, some of the summer school programs are BOSI's ACAD program, Saturday Academy, so that it's more accessible to our children. They can participate in these programs.
I'm sorry, that, that's a really important component to the success of these types of extra programs. You know, it's, it's phenomenal that we can offer these additional opportunities for children outside of the typical school day. But oftentimes, transportation to and from is the linchpin as to whether or not students can take advantage of these programs, whether they be during the summer or after school or on the weekends. So looking for ways that we can continue to support their, their transportation to and from is, 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 is a big, we think, a big hurdle to get over in order for us to be successful in those programs.
So fun fact, it's been four years since we approved that, the voters approved the free busing for our high school students. I think actually today, four years today.
Four years today? Yeah, wow. Went fast. When we move into procurements, records, risk management, a lot, you know, there's, there's a lot happening behind the scenes that really helps the organization. I mean, it's a, it's a big organization with a lot of moving parts, as you all know. And so often, there, there are so many things that happen, you know, in the shop that, that you, you know, you just might not, you might not be aware of, but that are helping to make sure that everything else is happening the way it needs to be happening. So streamlining our ability to order in, in an efficient, in an efficient way, ordering supplies and materials, all those things that need to happen, while at the same time, looking for ways to continue to, to support the district's Go Green initiative. So automating, you know, those platform, that online platform was a big deal for us. Moving away from, you know, paper budgetary requests and, and the like. Anne, do you want to talk about what the, the, what, what you've been doing up there?
So, you know, the purchasing department has issued a number of RFPs for professional services. Our claims auditor, internal auditor, looking at investment advisors and public relations. You know, as Dr. Ricker said, we're, we're putting in software and going to do online ordering. So the buildings and departments will be able to automatically do their ordering. And it'll go directly into our financial software and produce that purchase order. And then when they receive the item, they're gonna be able to go in and record the receipt of the item instead of all this paper going back and forth. So really streamlining that process. We're standardizing district-wide furniture purchases. We really want to, you know, create standard furniture for classrooms that have flexible furniture. And there'll be a committee that's working on that as well as office furniture. And then again, part-time support to kind of eliminate the temporary staffing that are, that occurs during peak times, but to really assist the risk management, the purchasing office.
Anne, how much part-time temporary help do we have for this and also for transportation? I wanted to go back to that as well and the need for a halftime person.
So they, they often, you know, for transportation, it's, it's certainly during the peak times of getting the routing all scheduled. It'll be over the summer. It'll be anticipation of the opening of school. You know, so that's generally when they'll, they'll need assistance. You know, the same thing for purchasing and records management is trying to, you know, during certain periods of time, whether it be, you know, trying to get all the contracts settled with making sure that we have all the insurance and the fingerprinting and data privacy. So they'll bring in temporary support staff at those busy times.
Typically, it's like for transportation, it usually runs, I'm hoping that it'll, it'll run into early September, but typically it runs into probably mid-October. When, you know, you're, you're having that, that really busy, busy time of year. And, you know, customer service is so important, making sure that parents and guardians will reach out, get somebody and are able to, you know, make that connection soon. And, and we want to try to reduce wait times as much as we possibly can too.
And what do we have in terms of staff in that office? Sorry, in the transportation office? Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
On just quick question for the transportation piece. Is it, I, I think I remember that it depends on, you know, when we settle things down in terms of that person. So it's conceivable that they could leave before October if, if things are in a place where we feel we're over the hump. Am I correct or no?
And we, we would love it to be sooner rather than later. But typically, we do see that, you know, it's kind of the busy time of year. There, there are several holidays in September that push out. You know, new students moving in. It, it's typically October when things start to kind of calm down a bit from that beginning or that summer into the beginning of the year push. But yeah, it could be.
And then there's other times when they're having to route for this, you know, they have to route in, you know, May, June, they're routing for the summer program. And so they're, they're also looking for that support so that it frees them up to still be working with the building administration and so forth. But again, you know, we made it cost neutral by, by, by eliminating the other, the other temporary support.
But it would be for the year, it would be a halftime person year, year round.
All right, moving into facilities and operations. I know Mr. St- All right, moving into facilities and operations. I know Mr. Stefano is here and and uh, you know, thanks Frank and and of course, the team for all their hard work. Safety and security is always top of mind for all of us. Uh we have come a long way and have done a great deal um in terms of um increasing. Uh our our, the tools in our toolbox, if you will, for safety and security all throughout the district over the last. Um seven or so years, uh and we have current projects that are underway right now, um things like the security station at high school. Um we've got uh training for um for for and with uh W White Plains Police Department, Department of Public Safety, all throughout our buildings. Um you know, we've got our our emergency plans uh that that are require updates every year, and they're in. Um traffic control equipment, we we have, uh for instance, ever at um Post Road. Doing all of our emergency drills, that's a a an annual process. And of course, um working on and making sure that our lockdown integration system is is up to date. And that's a, you you know, if you receive the updates, we're we are drilling all the time. It's happening all the time. Um in various facilities at various times. Um so huge credit and thanks uh to Jake Harrison and team. Uh for proposals for next year, we're looking to increase security staff at the high school. Um for uh for for shift one and one for shift two, that afternoon evening shift. Um security camera replacement at Highlands is uh is part of uh next year's plan. And and in, again, increasing and and continuing to offer training opportunities. So crisis prevention intervention, which is de-escalation techniques for our security professionals, health, safety awareness. Um and inspections as well. Uh we just had a meeting today uh wi- with regard to security. And again, we we've really worked hard and and continue to work hard to professionalize our security staff. Um these men and women are an integral part of our school community. Um and you know, and it's not in in an overbearing fashion. It's it's to be part of the school community. And at the same time, to be um on point and on target all the time, making sure that um they're visible, available. And ready to assist in in any way possible. Want to talk a little bit about uh uh this uh slide, Anne or or Frank?
Um so Frank and his team, you know, uh Mr. Stefano and his team have been doing um incredible job. At really looking to find energy efficiency, um been working on installing uh LED lighting. And you'll see that come up a a few times in areas that that we're pursuing that work. Um so those lighting projects are important, replacing foundate uh fountains. That combination fountain bottle filler that that, you know, certainly um, you know, saves us um energy. Um and then continuing air quality monitoring and improvements um in air filtration. Um they're also um wanting to add an additional full-time office clerk. To help with the energy monitoring and inventory control and preventative maintenance. And then as well, part of the long-range plan, um you know, they had mapped out what the increased cost would be. Needed for the increase in HVAC service, um heat pump replacements at Post Road. We have annual visual inspection this coming year. The following year, we're gonna have building condition survey. The state had put that on hold. And said we can alternate, and we were actually due for building concern uh condition survey, I believe, like two years ago. Um and then, um you know, exterior masonry inspections. Um and you know, an upgrade to the management system upgrade to get digital controls versus analog controls. Um Frank, I hope I got that all right. He's the expert. Yeah. And then on the um, on this slide, um you know, there is a a process that um Frank and his team go through. And there's a forum, they go out and they meet with each of the building principals and head custodians and really review. What are the needs of those buildings and, you know, kind of come up with those top three items that are gonna be included in the operational budget for facilities. And you'll see, you know, also um embedded for next year is to another um portion of dollars to go towards the LED. The LED lighting upgrade. So that that continues to save us, um and you'll see it on the next slide, energy. That, you know, offsets our utility costs. Um and so, um you know, Frank, I'm gonna have you jump in here. And just kind of talk about this work that you've been doing.
So the last two years, we've received about four hundred and fifty thousand incentives from CONEd. Uh and that was to do th- three major things, and that was, the first one is LED lighting retrofits. Which you could see by the slide, we saved five hundred and fifty thou- five hundred and fifty-five thousand hours. You know, and that relates to energy savings. You know, the next one was steam traps. We haven't looked at our steam traps in ten years. We're on an inspection plan right now. Uh we got an incentive from CONEd also on this. And and between that, we have savings of about a hundred and seventeen thousand. And then also, CONEd is looking, because of the mo- moratorium on gas service. They have a bunch of incentives for us to replace pipe insulation. So right now, two year, a year ago, we replaced the piping in White Plains High School, Highlands. And I believe GW. So this year, we're doing a second phase, and and if you see down below, you see the terms we saved. Five hundred and one uh tons of greenhouse gas saved also or reduced. Which the students at the high school are very appreciative, because they have a, they have an environmental committee now. And uh they're gonna be coming to a board meeting soon. Uh in twenty-twenty-three, we just got incentives for the three schools again, and that is Ridgeway. Uh Highlands and the high school. And and right now, the high school incentive was for the CONEd was to give us a hundred and nine thousand dollars. Costing us only twenty-two thousand for a pipe installation replacement at the high school, which is really a good deal. Uh automation, our building, if you look at the high school and some of the buildings, in twenty-twenty, that was, that was when we installed. And and some of the bases. So where real technology has changed in the last twenty-two years. So that's, that's why we need to do that. And then ongoing LED replacements. It's saving us half the money, but it's also increasing, we we're getting better lighting just in, just by changing LED, so.
And that's the status, that chart of the LED lighting of of what you've already accomplished. Um so that's great. Um and then on the next slide are additional projects that um, you know, based on our uh projections for twenty-one, twenty-two. That we're we're recommending to be done. Um the Eastview track replacement. Um you know, again, district-wide furniture, one-time-only throughout the the buildings. Um to create that flexible standardized classroom furniture. Uh the corridor replacement at Ridgeway, Maranic Lockers, LED lighting, district-wide uh steam. Um system replacement and district-wide pipe insulation.
And Chris, uh may I ask a quick question, please? Um I thought I saw the addition of another position in F and L.
Yes, yes, I I indicated.
Sorry, yeah, another position. So can you just um uh given of you, how how many positions are over there? And um, you know, and and just the responsibilities associated with each.
Yeah. Frank, you wanna?
Sure. Sure. So right now, I have, I have, I have a an office assistant and two office assistants. You know, one handles uh our our permits and then also purchasing. Uh I think out of this whole school district, we probably do the largest purchasing throughout. So we're submitting purchasing, following up on purchases. The the position that we're looking for, you know, we used to have somebody that helped us out with work orders. We generate, as I mentioned many times on budget presentations, you know, we generate seven thousand work orders a year. You know, somebody has to go through those work orders. We also generate two hundred to three hundred PM work orders. And now with the additional equipment that we're gonna be putting into the schools, we're gonna have to touch that equipment. You're gonna need somebody sitting there, setting up those uh, setting up those programs. Uh the other one is energy management. We haven't been managing our energy. Uh we spend two million dollars in energy. So you know, we're looking at a program that we could insert our bills, look for and and eventually. You know, go back to the school districts and look at saving. The pandemic's hopefully gonna be over shortly. And we're gonna have to go back and look at our energy costs because they're increasing, and I don't think they're gonna slow down anytime soon.
So I'm sorry, the additional projects to consider twenty-one, twenty-two, so that's for the current year?
For one, yes. To use one-time-only money based on our unbound projections. And you'll see that in your budget binder that's gonna come in another week or so.
Okay, so that's not for next budget, it's for this?
No, just one-time only, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure thing. All right, so capital plan, uh and again, you know, we started working on this uh in earnest years ago. Uh prior to the pandemic and um stakeholder uh stakeholder committee for for capital improvement, for master planning. Um a- all all of these uh items were were all reviewed. We looked at all critical infrastructure and educational improvements. Um we have for twenty-twenty-one capital projects approved. Uh we have the HVAC, which is, you know, combined at 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 Highlands uh with Chrisa funding to include air conditioning, MEMAS. George Washington, um we're we're actually, we're looking, uh reviewing at George Washington right now. And Roche-Chambeau restroom improvements, ceiling light replacements. We have uh the DASNY grant, which has been awarded and approved, and you get a huge thank you to a former settlement, Dave Buckwald. For all of his support there. Um we are in the process of infusing those funds. Um into doing all of um the HVAC, which is a part of the ARP and Chrisa funding for district-wide. Church Street, um George Washington, Eastview, Highlands, um will benefit from uh the use of those funds in that way. Um that has been a a a use or an allocation of funding that's gotten a lot of attention. Um because it is a creative way uh to be able to stretch those dollars that are one-time-only dollars from the federal government. Um in a way that's gonna benefit children for years and years to come, uh in terms of air quality. Um and also, you know, just to be able to use the buildings um fully year-round. Uh which, as you know, um anyone who's been on the third floor, George Washington or or Eastview or any of our buildings in the midst of the summer, it's hot. Um so you know, being able to offer this to our children um is is a great advantage. We also have a large track replacement at one point five uh million transfer to capital projects fund as part of that.
Dr. Ricker?
Yep.
I didn't see Ridgeway on the list for HVAC.
Ridgeway's part, Ridgeway's part of 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 the work. It's coming.
Okay, I just want to make sure they weren't left out.
Don't worry.
That was the funding that was supported by the ARP, the federal funds. We have the rest of the plan, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. So um and 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 thank you very much, Mrs. Buck is is on point. Um the the master planning, capital planning uh work that's going on has been um tremendous. And I just want to thank everybody who's been part of that process. Um you, we, we are excited to be sharing. Uh the the master plan uh with the the community as as we have over the last several weeks. And of course, it's on the agenda this evening for the board's consideration. We have ventilation, filtration, air conditioning, um twenty-six point three million. That's everything, uh again, utilizing the the DASNY funds, utilizing the Chrisa funds, the ARP funds. Um as well as capital reserve funds to make sure that we're attending to all HVAC in all of the buildings, all throughout the district. Including, of course, um our elementary schools. Uh we also have renovations, improvements and educational program space at seventy-one point four million. I'm sorry, let me go back up, zero cost to the taxpayer for HVAC, very important for me to note, uh a hundred percent, sorry. Um renovations, improvements and educational program at seventy-one point four million for May twenty-twenty-two. That's the uh this year's, we're proposing this year's um uh one of the ballot questions. And so in order to do this, uh the twenty-nineteen Capital Reserve Fund of eleven point four million requires authorization uh for use by the voters. Um issuance then of a serial bond amount of sixty million requires authorization of voters. This would be, again, tax-neutral, no tax increase because we'd be utilizing the 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 debt that's falling off. Um and and replacing it uh with the new debt, so tax-neutral to the taxpayers to accomplish these projects. And then we'd be asking for uh a the addition or the establishment of a of an additional new capital reserve. Which again, is no cost to the taxpayer to do this, um to be used for phase two of the long-range master plan, capital construction costs. Um and again, funded through unexpendited funds, which are savings and the general fund, and any other legally available funds that we would be able to use. We're asking for authorization of fifty million um for a period of over fifteen years. And this will continue to reduce taxpayer burden, as we have seen in past years, by being able to utilize those funds for capital projects. And and being able to then um avoid uh potential borrowing situations as well. I cover everything correctly, Anne?
Yes.
Okay. Next steps, uh non-instructural presentation is right now. Uh next steps will be the super tense preliminary budget to the finance committee. That was the mistake that I made earlier on March seventh. And then super intense preliminary budget to the Board of Education for review on March fourteenth. Um but very exciting, and I hope uh you are all as excited as we are to be able to present. Um these plans that are coming uh in in a very comprehensive fashion uh for for our children in our school district. And also a a very conservative and uh approach for the taxpayer as well. Uh questions? Well, as I mentioned, we're gonna be having this conversation again. Uh so that's great. All this information is gonna be available uh on District's website, as always, all about the budget section, we'll share it with everyone. Um and I, again, just a big thanks uh to to everybody for the all-hands-on-deck approach um to these processes. Which, as you know, in White Plains, it's not a one, you know, it's not a a certain time of year. Uh it's all year long um that we are working on these plans so that uh there's continuity. Uh and as much as possible predictability uh in 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 our spending plans. So thank you very, very much uh for your attention this evening.
Thanks for the presentation. Next, we're going to move on to public participation. If there is any, the public, um the board will entertain comments from the public on any issue. With a time limit of three minutes per person and a maximum time limit of twenty-five minutes. We ask that you protect the privacy of um any individual. And uh issues or concerns of a more personal matter may be discussed separately with the administration. Do we have any public participation? Please um raise it in the chat so that you can be acknowledged. Okay. Thank you. I don't see anything in the chat, and I don't see any hands raised. Thank you. Next, we're gonna move on to summary action items. We have summary action items for item five. And item six. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Are there any questions about those summary action items? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we're going to move on to our individual action items. The first one is the C-FRA resolution for the twenty-twenty-two bond referendum project. The recommended action is to adopt a negative declaration action. And Anne, I might ask that you provide a little um context around that, please?
Sure, sure. Um so um secret is the environmental um impact statement. That um we're required to do before any construction project. So on December thirteenth, the board did declare its intent to be lead agent. And proposed that the project at that time was a type-one action. Um and that requires a thirty-day notification um to circulate notice to um agencies of our intent. So tonight is the actual declaration um of a negative declaration for the type-one action. And the completion and adoption of the environmental impact statement.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Aloud.
Second.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I should just raise some questions or comments concerning this. And the next three items. Um and I wanna thank Dr. Ricker and Dr. Bakara Teich. And all the committee members. Who participated on the master planning. I know there's been a tremendous amount of work over the last few years. And uh as we look at this. And as we look at this secret, I think there's a lot of great work. That we're going to be moving forward in, particularly. The air conditioning and the ventilation in all of our schools, which I overwhelmingly support. As well as the works on our fields. And, and everything else regarding our infrastructure improvements to keep our schools in, in sound condition. But as we look at this master plan process, I have to say. It's my opinion, I don't believe we're done. I think as we look at the size of this addition that's looking to be built. At the high school to replace two buildings. Which is a fifteen thousand square foot replacement. It's being replaced with a building of fifty thousand square feet. Which will bring in an additional, which will replace the office space. And also bring in an additional twenty-three classrooms to the high school. And as we look at that. We were. The, the, the inventory of classrooms at the high school was shared with us and. Of regular classroom sizes, we've got about a hundred and seventeen classrooms at the high school. Adding twenty through twenty-three new classrooms increases the capacity of the high school by just under twenty percent. Which is quite a significant amount of capacity being added to the high school. And at the same time. We're looking at the high school with our enrollment forecast that showing, that shows. A forecasted decline of our enrollment in the next ten years of close to fourteen percent. So I have difficulty reconciling the increase of a twenty percent addition of classrooms. With a fourteen percent decrease. Of. Of, of forecasted enrollment. And that's where I'm having difficulty reconciling and my, and gaining support for this particular addition of fifty thousand square feet. I think we should look at that size of that building, I think we should look at decreasing the size of that building, probably by about half. Of that space, which would still bring about ten additional classrooms, which again is about an eight and a half percent increase in the number of classroom spaces. You know, when we submit these projects to the state. The state asks for a lot of information because they're going to become funding partners for these projects. And part of that, that information they look for is our enrollment information to look at justification. Of how, of why we need this extra space. And that's because they want to make sure the money is being spent wisely as well, and, and our reimbursement rate by the state is about one-third, so the state. Pays for about one-third of the additional instructional space as part of that funding process. And if they don't approve the funding, all of that rests on the shoulders of the taxpayers and the, and the shoulders of the district. Because once this project is approved in the total amount. It doesn't matter whether or not the state funds the project or not, the project still moves forward. The other thing that I think we should look at is we, we, we really haven't discussed alternatives. Such as scheduling of our buildings. You know, I'm not, I'm not saying. One of the things we can do is we've got, we've got a high school where we stop for one period every day. And none of the classrooms are used for that one period a day, and that's during the lunch period. If you had a rotating lunch, those rooms would be in, in operation. And that's an option to create additional capacity within the school district. So that would be a hundred and seventeen classrooms that could potentially be used for one period a day. One of the things, so as we look at the building and we look at the size and we look at our options, those are the things that really. Stand out to me, I just see as the building is being oversized. I really think we need a smaller building, and I have concerns about the state. Going ahead and becoming that funding partner, considering our enrollment forecast. One of the things I'm in favor of certainly are the fields, and we're looking at an additional turf field, and I think we could look at even more turf fields. I think back to what Laux Field looked like before it was done, and it was a rarely used field because it was always wet. And it really wasn't a good place to, good place to be, it wasn't reliable. And as a parent, I know I've seen many times those baseball fields are the same way. Down next to Laux, because again, they're at the bottom of that hill, and those would certainly be on my list. And as well as the softball diamond, and when we had a meeting. With our architect to discuss this master planning. The architect indicated that those fields would be ineligible for funding. Because we had to spend a cer, because a certain percentage of money had to be spent. In order for those fields to be eligible for state funding, and I think it's important. That it be made very clear that that's not the rules at the state right now, the state rules are. Ten thousand dollar capital project at the high school triggers those fields being eligible for state funding. And I think that was kind of left unclear when we, again, when we spoke with the architect. And it was never, it was never clarified, so I think that's important, too. We also had an opportunity to look at some of our other buildings, and I know if we think about other vocational and technical programs at the high school. We're a member, we're a member district of the Boses District. And that's where we offer many of our vocational technical programs. Doesn't mean we have to do them all at Boses, we can probably do some at our own. But we also have significant capacity district wide. I'm looking at our capacity study from sixteen seventeen. Eastview is about at fifty percent capacity. And Rochambeau is about the same capacity level wise. So if we're looking to expand types of programs where we can add alternative types of high school program. That's really the purpose of why we've held on to Eastview, because I was part of the committee. That discussed whether or not it was worth to keep Eastview. At a hundred and sixty thousand square feet or replace it at ninety thousand square feet the last time we did a larger bond. And at that point, the discussion and the solution was. Let's hold on to that more square footage, because it provides this district with greater opportunity and greater flexibility. So, you know, as we look at all of this. Again, I'm having a tough time reconciling the addition of all this space. If the enrollment forecast shows the way that they're saying it's going to be, we're going to end up with a building. That could be at seventy or sixty percent utilization in ten years' time at the high school. We could have a middle school at Eastview with same utilization, and we could have Eastview, or excuse me, Rochambeau with an equal utilization. And I think it's just important that we have a discussion, or at least I share with you my opinion. And why I'm having difficulty supporting, for supporting this item. Unfortunately, all three items are wrapped up into one resolution. So unfortunately, I can't pick and choose which ones I will support and which ones I won't support. Individually, I have to, I have to vote on one, on one item, so. I want to make it very clear, I am certainly supportive of the HVAC work, the other infrastructure items. My reason for voting no tonight will be just because of the size of that building. The other, the additional capacity here and the other alternatives that are available. And again, in, in doing that, I just want to make sure, because we don't always. Many times we all act as, as one, and we've got one vote, and I want to make sure it's very clear here, and it's clear to everybody where my support lies. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any more questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Mrs. Eller, we require a roll call vote for this, these items. I will call the roll now. Mrs. Eller?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Mrs. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Ricky?
No.
Mr. Latesia?
Muted, King.
Mrs. Mrs. Lovich?
You're muted, Rose.
Mrs. Dr. Stein?
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And we do appreciate. Comments, and we will continue to work very hard on this endeavor. Next, we have the resolution of necessity to do capital construction projects. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
No, no, again, we need the roll call vote.
Sorry, sorry.
Mrs. Eller?
Aye, yes.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Mrs. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Ricky?
No.
Mr. Latesia?
Yes.
Mrs. Lovich?
Aye.
Dr. Stein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have the authorization of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two board referendum and use. Of a two thousand nineteen capital reserve for capital construction projects. May I have a motion?
So move.
Any questions?
Yes. Are these funds being used on the project, the, the additional building project that I just talked about, not supporting?
Ann, can you comment, please, on Jim's question?
So the question is, is the seventy, the seventy-one point four million being used for the building project?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? All in.
No.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mrs. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Ricky?
No.
Mr. Latesia?
Aye.
Mrs. Lovich?
Aye.
Dr. Stein?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution authoring, authorizing three. Propositions for the annual district meeting regarding capital construction projects. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Michelle?
Mrs. Eller?
Yeah.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mrs. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Ricky?
No.
Mr. Latesia?
Aye.
Mrs. Lovich?
Aye.
Dr. Stein?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we have the side letter agreement amendment with the White Plains Substitute Teacher Association. May I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Do we have any questions? This is the recommended approval of the amendment. The side letter of agreement with White Plains Substitute Teacher Association for a temporary rate increase. For per day substitute teachers from one twenty-seven per day to one forty-five a day effective April first. Twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
And this is in response to the, you know, difficulty in getting substitute teachers.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Any questions?
I just, I know. Thinking about what Jim had said, and I know we already voted, but I was wondering if Dr. Ricky could just speak to, you know, the first few slides of tonight's presentation had to do with declining enrollment, declining live birds. We talked a little bit about the utilization of the rooms, is it solely for classrooms? I, I, attending a few of the meetings, I understood it would, you know, it'd be used for other uses as well, so could you just, maybe someone, Ann or, or Dr. Ricky, speak to the. Maybe people aren't familiar with what that, that square footage or what that building is going to entail.
Good point, okay.
Sure, sure, and, and, you know, let me just thank, thank Mr. Ricky, Jim, you know, he makes, he makes really solid points, and, and that's understandable, and, and it's, and I'm glad you're asking me. Yes, enrollment is projected to, to decline, and it has declined, you know, this year, that, that there's no mistaking that. Enrollment at the high school is up, and, and the, the other thing to remember is that, you know, when kids are moving in, in groups. It's, it's going to, there're going to be different impact points at any given year. And, and without a doubt, you know, enrollment projections can change year to year to year. There's no, there's no question, though, you know, will enrollment be down in the future? Possibly could be. What's then, you know, when, when we think about the square footage of the proposed facility. It does, it makes perfect sense to ask that question. What I think is, is important to, to recognize, and I know, and I know Jim is, has been considering this, too, is that those spaces that are being. Proposed right now are not all traditional classroom spaces. And, you know, as, as Jim was making mention about Rochambeau and, and Eastview in terms of capacity in those buildings. Look, I think Rochambeau is, 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 it's an, it's our alternative high school, and that small setting is integral. You know, to, to that, that educational environment, and, you know, not having a crowded building is exactly what, what we're going for in, in that, in that setting. In terms of Eastview and being able to utilize Eastview for, for those new types of spaces, for instance, career technical education spaces. We don't see that as, as a, as viable in, in terms of that space right now, what we do see is this opportunity. For us to construct this new facility from the ground up with the sole purpose of housing. Those types of classes and those types of opportunities as, as an advantageous, or, you know, advantageous to the school district. Things like a dance studio, you know, that's going to be a larger room than you would typically have in, in a classroom setting. If you can envision, you know, a twenty-first century automotive shop or twenty-first century mechanical engineering shop, or. You know, you start to integrate computer science with, with some of the CTE, or a barber shop, or, or, you know, beauty salon, those types of opportunities. That's the, the, the vision for, for that type of a setting. Doesn't negate anything that Jim was saying, just in terms of providing context. Some of those classrooms are not necessarily going to have twenty-five, thirty-eight kids in them, they're going to have fewer students because the nature of, of that enterprise. I don't, I think. One of the challenges, of course, is trying to predict the future. And, and that's almost impossible to do. The one thing that I can predict pretty solidly is, and, and only based on experience and what you see, is you don't often. See folks lamenting additional space. What you see is the, the lamentations of, of being pressed. And, you know, look, we experienced something over the last two years where we would have never thought that we would be trying to physically distance people. And, you know, get, get as much space as we possibly could. And, and yeah, right, Joe, it's not going to happen again, I, I absolutely hope that's the case. The point, though, is that we were in a position where we were able to overcome a lot of barriers because we had space to be able to do that. You know, I, I am comfortable with having space. Jim brings up a good point, too, you know, whether or not this will be supported at, from state education, we believe that it will. If state education came back and told us that they're not going to support our endeavor, I, I'm going to come back to you. With, with that news, because that changes a lot of, of the conversation, I, I, I wouldn't say, you know, we're all systems go. With or without state ed, that, 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 that's not, you know, a position, and you'll, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that is not at all a position that we, we would be willing to take, so. I absolutely completely understand and, and appreciate, you know, the perspectives. I, I also happen to think that having this space available to us. In concert with the types of things that we've been talking about, the types of classes and offerings that we've been talking about. You know, would, would be an advantage for us in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Rick, I'm so sorry to interrupt.
Nope.
We are, we're just out of order because we do have a motion on the floor, so I do want to close that out.
My apologies.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just want to, you know, keep it that way, and I'm sorry if I cut you off, Dr. Rick, I'm very.
I was done.
But we do have the motion on the floor, we did have a motion for the side letter agreement with White Plains Substitute Teachers, and I believe. We were moved and seconded, Cheryl, you did comment, just to give a little more context around this in terms of the difficulties. And finding substitutes, so we want to be competitive so that we attract the best substitutes for our students, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and again, I apologize to kind of cut things. Thank you. And again, I apologize to kind of cut things out. I just wanted to, to wrap that out. Um, so we're at the point where we can adjourn the meeting. Um,
Rosemarie, can I just make a comment? I, I just, you know, I, I want to thank Ann and Frank and their teams for all the work that they've done on the non-instructional budget. Um, you know, sometimes it's easier to imagine the instructional budget and the positive impact it has on our students. But in fact, I mean, the non-instructional budget, you're talking about, you know, teams and sports and food and technology and transportation and facilities, all of which impact our kids as well. So, um, I, I really am very appreciative of all the, the work and thoughtfulness that has gone into these budgets, which are really, you know, aimed at, um, you know, improving what we already do well and trying to do better and really having a positive impact on our kids. So thank you.
Thank, thank you. It's, it's, it's that time of year. We know and appreciate everything. And it's, it's tough because we're going to ask those questions and, you know, that's what we're supposed to do. So thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone, um, for attending. And if there's nothing else, Dr. Rika or anyone, I'm.
I just want to say thanks.
You can say more if you want, if there was more to the.
I'm good.
I, I, I'm really sorry.
And, and I want to say thank you. Thank you for all your support.
Yeah, thank you. And you know, again, you know, I'm a very, there's always a way. And, and we're going to get there because what we need to do is support our, our kids with state of the art facility. We need to really, you know, just have, you know, our staff in state of the art facilities. We need to have more staff to make sure that our kids are, just remain to be the premier cream of the crop that they already are. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Almud.
Almud. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.